Who is Commissioner Myra Uribe? Welcome to another episode of You Can't Make This Shit Up. I'm your host, Joel Hoxley, David Washington, with our special guest today, Commissioner Myra Uribe. Could you introduce yourself to our audience?
Yeah, thank you guys for having me on your podcast. My name is Myra Uribe. I am the Orange County Commissioner for District 3. We're identified by numbers, but I'm excited to be a commissioner. Cool, fascinating thing. I am born and raised in District 3, so this is the only place I've ever lived. First generation American, so my mom's from Argentina, my dad's from Colombia. Parents met in English class in the 60s, and my dad was a mechanical engineer, which Martin Marietta, aka Lockheed Martin, hired him back in the 70s, and the family moved to Orlando. I came along later, born here, and I love this place. I love it. And now I'm also a mom with two kids, my daughter Faith and my son Lincoln, and my awesome husband Kevin, that we've been married 22 years.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
So David, this is your county, so tell us, what's your questions?
Well, my first question is, for a lot of people who don't really engage in politics like we do, they don't really understand what a commissioner's job is.
Yeah. Most people don't know what their commissioner does, which is so interesting, because I tell people all the time when I meet them, I will make decisions that will affect your livelihood more than the present United States will on a day-to-day basis. Your trash being picked up, the quality of your water, the roads you go on, the sidewalks, your tax bill on your property taxes, your sales tax. I mean, it goes on and on and on. And this is the basic level of government. And when people are like, "Oh, I only vote for president," or "I only vote for governor," it's sad, because then you're not ensuring the right person is representing you at the local level. And young people, it's really hard to understand, because their mindset is not worried about those issues. So I say, "You will one day, you will one day." And so having a daughter who's now voting age, she's learning, but it's really, really important, because you want to park, you want to make sure you have enough police officers, you want to make sure you're funding your fire and your police and your dispatchers, your 911. That all comes through Orange County. And then furthermore, because we're such a hot location for visitation, there's the tourism industry also. And that one's an interesting relationship, because while there is a lot of revenue, imagine 75 million people visit here every year. Roughly, that's 500,000 people here a day, more than what lives here.
Wow.
So if we have a population of over 1.5 million people, and 500,000 people on any given day are visiting us, you're talking about 2 million people, over 2 million people in Orange County at one time. And it's a very robust industry, but we also know it's an industry that isn't as financially stable, doesn't offer the wages that you need to live in this town. I wanted to say, "to live in this town." And we're a big hospitality city. Now, we have moved, and we've got a lot of technology growing. Everything you see coming out of Valencia and UCF and companies relocating here. We want people to make more, but it's tough. It's a tough time. Housing is tough, transportation is tough. You've got a lot of hot issues that are worrisome. I think about if I were coming out of college or just newly married, what could I afford nowadays? And it's not the same that it was 20 years ago.
Well, I'm from, I graduated from UCF, Go Knights!
Charge on.
Charge on, guys, okay. But my question is, what are we doing in Orange County to keep that talent here? That's always been my biggest thing. We educate such a large amount of people, and then, why do they leave?
Well, I think it's because of the jobs and the job opportunities. So there's been a lot of emphasis on trying to get those tech jobs here. And we have a robust medical industry. You know, we have two major hospitals here, a lot of medical industry. And then also, we have the Medical School of UCF, which has been good. But we do see a lot of these young people, when it's time for internships and residencies, they're not staying here. They're going to Boston and Atlanta. But there is an attempt, and most recently, in our last county commission, we're actually trying to get people to want to stay in business in Orange County. We tend to do this, and this is not just us, but just around the world. It's like, how do we bring someone here? How do we become the next shiny toy? And I think that you kind of look at it in two ways. Yes, we do want businesses to come and invest here and feel that this is a place their employees would want to live and raise their family. But what about the businesses that are here? What about the businesses who've already committed, who do employ people, who are part of our tax role? Are we doing anything to help them escalate up? And I would like to see that kind of shared, in a sense, because there have been some costly mistakes, like the Sanford-Burnham Institute, where the county, what, 15, 20 years ago, gave a ton of tax incentives for this company out of California to come here. And guess what? They didn't do anything. They didn't stay. We gave away a lot, and at the end of the day, we didn't show for it. And in my role, we had to figure out who was going to purchase that land and do something. It ended up going to UCF. No, 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 or was it the hospital? It was between UCF and the hospital. To come back and do something, we had to stop doing that. That's like, you know, giving a kiss on your first date. How about they court you for a while? How about they prove to you that they want to be here and they want to invest in here? And when we do look at jobs and we say, "Okay," we did a, I remember early on in my tenuredship here, is Sherman Williams, the company for paint. They decided to invest in their location on Sand Lake Road, which is an area that really needs it. They grew it, and we gave them a tax incentive to want to stay here. And they were going to offer so many jobs, making over $65,000 a year. What's key is, are you going to bring people from where already works in your company? Or are you going to offer employment here? You got to read the fine print. Because it's great that these companies want to do that, but if you're just relocating your staff from Houston to Orlando, are we really benefiting when it comes to the job? And it's, I'm not saying it has to be one or the other. It's not a black and white, but it's one of those things where we want them to contribute locally. We want folks here to be able to have opportunities to work for a great company and grow in that. So I think that, like I said, while we're looking to invest and have other companies come here, technology is huge growing, the chips over in Osceola County. We also want to help the guy who's been in business 20 years and would love to remodel or upscale or go to that next level and increase his company. And you got to take care of home. I call it like taking care of home when you do this. And I think that you can do both successfully.
Excellent. You were born here, raised here, you have such longevity, so you know the history of Orange County.
Right.
Going back to what you were saying about building up businesses, jobs here in Orange County. We have Neal City in Osceola County. And I understand that Mayor Buddy Dyer, City Orlando Mayor, talked about Orlando being the center of the metaverse. When you talk about new technology and the county investing and bringing those companies there, is there a space for the Web 3, cryptocurrencies, that type of technology businesses here?
I think there's space for everything. I don't think we have to cut ourselves short in one way or another. I want to remember, as an Orange County Commissioner, you can't be in the city of Orlando if you're not in Orange County, okay? So we are the entire county, and we have 13 cities, municipalities in our county. Of course, I don't know if Reedy Creek counts anymore, because you know, that's gone through some little bit of changes there. But I think that we have a lot of capability of growth. I mean, there are areas that still have the ability to densify and create that. And I think that we should. We should encourage it, and we should have it. You look at some decisions where our partner county, Osceola County, has garnered some of that. And I know Seminole County is always looking for opportunities to grow. But you know, when you think of us, really, we're a region. Osceola, Orange, and Seminole County are a region. We're a region when it comes to transportation. You look at state and federal funds. We're a region of, somebody can work in Altima and live in Orlando or live in Kissimmee. It is not unusual. And I think when we work together, we're a lot more successful.
Indeed.
I mean, I have a business, Don Julio's, which is a company that started on Chickasaw and Lake Underhill. Well, they're growing into Lake Mary and in Sanford. That's great. I'm still going to support Don Julio's.
Right.
As they do that, as we should. Because whether I spend money in Seminole, Orange, or Osceola County, it all goes into bettering services and bettering revenue and all of those things, which are going to make us prosper. I can guarantee you, when you're on I-4, you're not saying, "I'm leaving Seminole County, I'm in Orange County, let me pull over and go to 7-Eleven, because I want Orange County to have that revenue, and let me get back on, because I got to go to Osceola, but I'm not going to spend only in Osceola." That's not how people live or think.
Right.
They're in central Florida.
I like that, yes.
Well, I can tell you, when I started Dunkin' Donuts here, it's 30 cents more than it's here, but no, I'm not that way. Look, I love it, the way you're addressing that. And what I'd like to kind of know is, you know, you've been a commissioner, you got a special election, and you're running for reelection. The question is, what's the one thing that you think was the biggest, the biggest impact you've had in your time here in the commission?
That's tough. There have been a lot of things, because there's been a lot of things that I've been able to do in my community, and then there's things that I've been a part of regionally. And so if you don't mind, I'm going to break that up a little, because there have been things like, I brought the first dog park to District 3. You know, and that's huge, as someone who has fur babies. We want our, those are like family members. If you tell a pet owner, "That's your pet and not your family," they get very offended. That was something major. I was out in a community over the weekend where people were so happy, because I had put no parking signs and no littering. And now all the people who used to loiter there are no longer there. I have been over in Rio Pinar, where there was supposed to be a 276-unit apartment, and with the community, we fought it, and now it's only going to be 57 homes. So there are successes where you've empowered your community to do good things, you know, and to be able to feel proud of their community, and they protected their community. Same thing with code enforcement issues, same thing even working with law enforcement. All these things, even my relationships and work with the city of Belle Isle, city of Edgewood, city of Orlando. We've done things together. I have one, I talked to the mayor of Belle Isle today, and we're making a road, a golf-driven road, which has to be, we have to address it and make it legal, so that that can happen. And they're really happy, because they have a school, and a lot of parents take their kids through the golf cart. But then I have a road where people were speeding, and I finally got speedhumps put in. So success is a lot of little successes, to be a part of and to actually give people voice. I love when I hear, "Wow, you're the first politician that actually ever did anything." And then there is the support issue, food drives, back-to-school events, fishing, teaching kids how to fish every year, skateboarding events, celebrating Three Kings event, and Christmas. And so there, and trunk or treats, you know? Those are nice events too. So it's a lot to say, you know, what's the one thing? When I've been able, because if I said the dog park, but then I'd be like, "Oh, wait, we did this over here, and we did that." So that's great. Regionally, moving us, you know, just in my role, is being able to get TDT to loosen the purse and give $5 million more to the arts in our local community. That's major. Recently, I was appointed by the Secretary of Transportation and the Governor to the Florida 2055 Transportation Steering Committee. So this daughter of immigrants, who's just a county commissioner in District 3, is going to be impacting what the future of transportation looks like for the next 30 years. That's huge, because it's no longer roads and trains and cars. It's space, and it's ports, and it's, what an exciting time. I know I'm a bit of a nerd, because I love transportation, but that's cool. But then at the same time, I've gone to Tallahassee and advocated for funding for those that are disabled and need special assistance with transportation.
Well, I'm going to tell you, you need to get with Representative Doug Banks, because he has legislation about vertical vehicles, and he would be excellent to get into conversation with, because that's something that's passionate for him. So that's what I love about these podcasts. You get to hear different ideas and energies, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I people miss housing, right? Because we talk about affordable housing, and to me, that's too easy to say, right? Because there's attainable housing, and there's workforce housing. When 68% of our deputies in Orange County can't afford to live in Orange County, we have a housing issue. When teachers can afford to teach your kids, but can't live in the neighborhood where they live with their kids. Nurses and firefighters, that's a workforce attainable housing issue. And I'm excited to work, I'm working with Disney right now, because they're looking at setting aside funding for what I call essential workers. Because I don't really think you meet people who say, "I don't want to work, and I just want you to pay for me to live." You know, there is probably some that would say, "Sure, I'll just sit at home for the rest of my life." But I think most people want to be productive. They want to make an income. They want the finer things in life. And it's got to be tough where you work one or two jobs, and you can barely make it. That's when you have a housing crisis. And I really feel that you can't talk about housing and not talk about poverty. And it has been proven, you look at statistics across this country, you stick people who are making their way up with people who are doing well. You get a better outcome. It's that whole theory of what your parents used to say, "Be around who you want to be like." And I believe in that. So we need to be encouraging people to be successful and roll off that. There was a time, I remember when I was younger, when I first got married, where you lived at home or you lived in an apartment while you saved for a house.
Correct.
My, this new generation may never own a house.
At these prices.
You know, so my kids may never actually own a house. They may live in a townhome if they're lucky, or a condo. So we got to stop isolating this and not realizing it's a generational issue, it's a poverty issue. And if we really want to see change, we have to be strategic about it.
Okay. Commissioner, at one time, you were an aide to Senator Bill Nelson.
NASA guy now, yeah.
Yes, yes. What was that experience like?
It was amazing. One thing I really enjoy is that I learn from anybody I'm around. So working for Senator Nelson, which politics is very different 20 years ago too, 24 years ago, it wasn't so partisan. And it really hurts me now when you see such partisan politics, because I actually feel like it's a lot of noise. And I tell people all the time, and I've really been very thoughtful into not getting involved in partisan politics, because I don't want you to not want to reach me, because you hate me, because of what I think about politics.
Sure.
And I don't want you to think that I'm not going to help them, because I'm another way. I tell people, and you can, you guys can probably attest to this, I really don't get involved in any partisan politics, one way or the other. One, because whether you like the governor or not, the governor does allocate funding for this county.
That's true.
And whether you like the president or not, the president allocates funding to the state.
Correct.
To education, to everything. So if you put yourself in a predicament that you have tied or closed a door, how effective are you as a public servant? And I want to be effective. I want to make sure that I can do my job to the best ability by not bringing emotion into the job. And that's different for a woman, you know, because we're very emotional. But I hate to sound almost very, like, simplistic of it, but I don't look at this, I look at this.
Well, it's the big picture, and I think that's always important. David and I work together, because that's the whole point. There's no reason why, you know, two parties can't get along. There's so many things that we can come to the middle.
Are you guys are two parties? No, I'm just kidding.
No, we're not two parties. Look, I am a nonpartisan.
Then we have a three-party, no, I'm just kidding.
Well, I'm a, I am in the same predicament that you are right now, because I'm running for city commissioner in Castleberry. So I am nonpartisan, 100%. I love what the city is doing. I want to continue that momentum. And it's, you know, it's a really nice place to live, and you want it to be a better place for people to live. We want to take that burden of housing off of Orlando. We want to be, you know, more urban and available. So we want to be walkable. So these are things that, while you're out here doing your part, we want to be doing ours. So I understand the nonpartisan as much as I possibly can.
Yeah, and I really enjoy it, because people will say, "Well, what party affiliation are you?" You know, and I said, "Well, I'm nonpartisan. So whatever you're registered, I'm going to be on your ballot."
Yeah. But then you got the media that's going to tell everybody what party you're in, and I think that's a disservice in the fact that you are nonpartisan. You're doing everything to be nonpartisan, and why the newspaper comes out and labels you is kind of disappointing.
Yeah, I'm in a little bit of a different situation, but when I was first running, I was. It's like they wanted to put me in a box.
Right.
And not just the media, people. You know, people just naturally feel like, "Okay, I got to put them somewhere to know how I'm going to gauge that relationship." And one thing that I've worked really hard in my six years of being here is, I help everybody. So whether you live in Belle Isle, or whether you live in Azalea Park, or you live in Pine Castle, or you live in Edgewood or Rio Pinar, I'm going to be your commissioner, and I'm going to be there to try to help and do everything I can. And it's nice when people tell me, "Hey, you're a hard worker." I think that takes, that's one of the best compliments I get to hear, is, "You're a hard worker, you're everywhere." I don't know if I like that one, "You're everywhere." But, you know, and that, you know, no one can really say, "Hey, I saw you at this political rally, or I saw you protesting over here." And I'm conscious of that. I'm conscious of that, because I want people to feel that I'm approachable, and that I'm going to work with them. And I tell people all the time, one thing that I guarantee as an elected official is, "You can come and meet with me. You are welcome to come here." When we're done this afternoon, I have a public hearing meeting, but there's a woman, she's in her 90s, and she's having a transportation issue, and I'm going to swing by her house, because she's like, "You have to come see this." I said, "Okay." Can't stay long, you know, because those conversations can get real long. But I'm going to come by and see. Now, I can't do that all the time, because I represent over 250,000 people. But sometimes things are warranted, when it's not even that inconvenient. And I say, my motto as being an elected official is, "Try to find the yes before you get to no." I don't like, I tell my staff all the time, "We can't, ah, have you tried?" And if we have tried, and then we get there, we know we tried. And that's how everyone should be handled and done and helped out.
Do you find, to speak to this nonpartisan piece, going back when you were first running for office, and you saw the benefit in maybe running under a particular political flag, as you become more comfortable in your role as commissioner, your constituents know you more, do you find that politically, that being able to have conversations across the political spectrum lends more credibility to the work that you're trying to do for the community?
Most definitely, yes. One of the proudest pieces I ever put out there was just showing both parties helping me out. And there was a mail piece I did where I had Linda Chapin, former county mayor and a Democrat, and Glenda Hood, former mayor of Orlando and a prominent Republican. And the piece was, "Two difficult parties, one choice, Myra Uribe." So that made me feel wonderful. And to even Belle Isle, the mayor there is Republican descent, but he knows we work together. And he's like, "You're my friend, you're a hard worker, you help our city. I'm happy to support you, because I know what you'll do." And it goes both ways. And I'm kind of lucky not being in a partisan race, because I'm sure it's hard to get past that noise if you're already tagged on your ballot that you're this.
Yes.
And so you're right on the nonpartisan, for people, hopefully, you know, like whether you're a registered Republican, you're going to get your Republican primary, and I'm going to be on your ballot. If you're no party, I'm going to be on your ballot. And if you're a Democrat, I'm going to be on your ballot. There is a, there's a nice sense of that, to do that, because I, like you, like why you're running, you want to see better government. You want to see better opportunities for your residents. You want to see quality of life. And what I tell people all the time, it's not just quality of life, it's trying to even out that field of quality of life, of giving folks who aren't getting all of that, a little bit of that, and for the ones that are getting it, maintaining it.
Well, my final, my final question is really important to me, because we've touched on it a little bit. How do we educate or get people to be so interested at the bottom? I always talk about voting the bottom of the ballot up. Because if you can't vote the bottom of the ballot, why are you even voting? Because everybody knows the noise, like we were talking about. How do we educate people about the bottom of the ballot and how important it is?
That is so tough. I was interviewed by a UCF student today with that same question, and he's passionate. He's like, "I like politics. How do I get other people my age to want to?" And I said, "You have to understand where the problem is. One, I have a 20-year-old, okay, so I have this conversation. Yes, she's been registered since she was 17, and she hasn't missed an election since she's been able to, but her mom's a commissioner, so she knows more than the average. But you have to talk to them on what's important to them. And ironically, it could be the arts, you know, and it could be sports. I mean, we're a big sports town, and I'm not talking like the Magic. When you look at Brazil versus USA, Barcelona versus Manchester City, when you look at artists like The Rolling Stones coming, or Pitbull, or J Lo, there is a negotiation to get them to pick this town to come perform."
The Jaguars are going to need a place to play.
Hello. Exactly. And you have to start explaining that. But also, if you really notice, people shy away from something they don't understand. And so when you tell them, when you put on your faucet and you drink that water, you want to make sure it's clean, right?
Amen.
And when you put your trash out on the corner, who do you think will take care of that?
Right.
So you almost have to break it down to where it's part of their lives. And it's tough, trust me, because it's not sexy being a county commissioner. And if you're trying to be sexy in that role, it's going to be tough, okay? And so bringing a life to it, and one of the things that I do a lot is I get very engaged in non-political stuff. People are always, I met a guy yesterday, and he's like, "Hey, you're at the library." And I was like, "I didn't go to the library yesterday, I don't know what you mean." But they, the library did these little bookmarks, where we hold a card. And so he's like, "No, they had your sign, and you're holding a book card." And I'm like, "Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah." And I get a lot, which is really funny, "Hey, you're Myra Uribe." Like, it's a third person, you know? And I said, "Yeah, it's me, and then, you know, you're here." And I'm like, "Yeah." Like, I think that we've gotten into this world of, here's us, and here's elected officials. And one thing I really work on is trying to mingle that. And I encourage that for you. I go to the grocery store, and it's funny, because people look at me, you know? The weirdest thing is when people call my children's names, because if you go on my social media, I'm like, "Oh, it's Lincoln's birthday, oh, and Faith did this," and whatever. And my daughter used to have a hard time, because she'd be like, "Why do they know me?" You know? But people like to feel like they know you. People want to connect with you naturally. And if we as electeds could try to do more of that connection, I think it helps, like walking around with a smile on your face, saying hi to people. At the gas station, I get it anywhere I go, where people, and remember, I'm born and raised in my district. The fun ones are at church, when people are like, you know? But I have to tell you this funny story. So my son, he's grown up here. He just turned seven two weeks ago. And I know, and I, he was three months old when I announced I was running for this race, okay? So I've been in office six years, plus you had that year of trying to get elected, and then now. And he refers to me as a commissioner in third person. So he's like, "Hey, mommy, the Myra Uribe people are here." You know? I always think it's hilarious, but it's a unique perspective, you know? And, but I think we have to humanize this role a lot more, engage. And something that I'm really proud of is I mentor high school students, 11th and 12th grades, I do two years, to hopefully pivot that mindset when they go forward. But part of what we do when we mentor them is they're responsible for doing a community event. So we have this event, we do it every year. We've had two already, so next year will be our third, called Connectable. And it is for teens to connect with teens. And that's all is invited, high school kids. And it's resources that they may not have at school, job opportunities, further education, further technical training, and some counselors, but also hard issues, like we give out Narcan. We give out Narcan every year. We have the Zebra Coalition there. You should not feel scared to understand who you are, one way or the other. But we have counselors there, because kids go, I think we always assume, "Oh, you're just a kid." No, kids go through things. And we should not invalidate their feelings of whatever they're going through. So I think the more we try to humanize us as what we are and how you can do it. Every time I talk to kids, I said, "Yeah, I'm a daughter of immigrants, and I'm a county commissioner, and I bet you're saying, 'Oh, I can be a county commissioner.'" I said, "No, you have to go past me." See, because I've done the county commission role. What are you going to do next? done the county commission role. What are you going to do next? And I think that if we start inviting and including people, it can happen. I hope so.
I like that. Again, the young people involved early.
Yeah.
And it's part of their civic education.
Yeah. So my thing is, almost 95% of all of my events, if you ever come out to it, the volunteers are all students. All students. And I have people who want to help me. So I can't say, hey, you're not a student, so you can't come and help. But most recently, we did a food drive two weeks ago. We had the Colonial High School football team and the Colonial High School National Honor Society helping. And the, when the news came, they wanted to talk to me. I'm like, no, you need to be talking about the students who go to the school, who are helping their own community have food resources. And that's what the, that's where I hope at the end of the day, when this is all over, and wherever I land, whether I go on further politically, whether I win reelection, whatever happens, or I go into the private world once again, whatever, I just hope I left it a little bit better than when I found it.
Indeed. Indeed.
Well, David always has a gotcha question. And I can't, you can't have an interview without his gotcha questions. So that.
Believe it or not, I have two. I have one coming in. But then when I walked into your office, and it's a lovely office. I really like it. I saw the Barcelona jersey.
Yes.
And the soccer balls. Are you a big fan of soccer?
I am. But what you forgot was the John Cena over here too.
Oh.
That's John Cena. Never give up. Yeah. So being of Argentinian and Colombian descent, soccer runs through our blood.
Correct.
Okay? And so I am a big Leo Messi fan, of course. I've never had the opportunity to see him play, which is killing me because two years in a row, he duped us.
Yes, that's right.
But I think it's great. And I love to see how the sport has grown. And then I'm Colombian too. So both very competitive countries.
Exactly.
And the coach of the Orlando City Lions is Colombian. So really, really nice guy. But I also have the city pride because those girls are awesome. And that ball is autographed. I bought it at a charity event. And so I love sports. And after doing sports for eight years and sports radio, it's fun, you know? And I love UCF. And I'm not necessarily, I like wrestling, but I'm a big John Cena fan.
Okay.
And so my, I have two people I want to meet, John Cena and Leo Messi. So if anybody listening has any ability to get me a little bit closer.
Well, all I know is I'm a big Juan Pablo Montoya's fan from Colombia, one of the fastest men on four wheels, Formula One, IRL. I mean, just, you name it, he's Colombian. So I understand. You know, and then unfortunately, my baseball player is Puerto Rican. But that's, we'll forgive him, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, first Blue Jay to ever go into the Hall of Fame is Robbie Alomar. So you got to love it. But we thank you so much. And then, oh, he's got one more question. No, I know you got one more question.
That was a top line.
No, that's, that's about what they are. So but he's got you another gotcha question.
All right. So this was a little bit more personal for us two politicals. You co-hosted with your husband, The Kevin Sutton Show.
Yep.
On ESPN. What advice do you give to politicals on opposite ends of the political spectrum? What advice do you give us?
Well, you guys, by the way, are really good together. You have, you're ying to the yangs. I really appreciate that. And, you know, for me, I was a ladies' point of view on the show.
Yes.
So I was never intended to be on the show. The woman that was supposed to be the ladies' point of view never showed up the first day that we went live. And guess who came in and was impromptu? I was the one that was writing the script because I was a, I was a writer of journalism major, major, early on in my life. And then I took on, but I would say, talk clearly into the mic.
Yes.
Don't cough, you know, and try not to swallow or breathe hard. And then know where you're going. Because you guide the whole thing. And you guys have done a great job. I mean, obviously, I'm a little bit easier to talk to because I'm willing to go. But enunciate.
Yes.
Enunciate is always good. There's nothing that I can't stand in listening to talk radio. And I'm like, what do they say?
Oh, I'm from Massachusetts, so it's really hard for me to enunciate.
Well, you've done well. You've done well.
Chicago accent comes out.
No. But you can enunciate with those, you know? I just think it's great. Because you always want your listeners to want to come back and listen. And find your tone. One of the best things that I ever got compliments were, is that I like listening to you, you know? And I was like, wow, that's really, that's really awesome. So you want, whatever your tone is, where you're actually happy, but personable, and can articulate that, people will gravitate to that. And people will know you from that. And when you find your tone, makes everything easier.
Well, maybe we can have you on outside of the office and have a political conversation with your, with your husband. And we would love to have that opportunity.
He was the crazy one on the show. He was the one that.
Oh, yeah.
I was the tone.
Well, he's always been like, and I say this from, you know, a pleasant way. I mean, he's the protector. I love the fact that he's out there always being that guy that says, look, just talk straight to me.
He is. He is. And I'm very thankful because he's my best friend and my husband, clearly. But, but he is. I tell people all the time, this could not happen without him. And without my family. And not, like you've met a lot of political people. They're not lucky enough to have their spouse be by their side as much as I do. People always, he's known as the first lady of District Three. And people know him. I joke around now because when we go to events, people are like, where's your husband? I'm like, he's got his own friends. He doesn't need me anymore. You know, he's become that popular. And I love that about him. I always tease him like, you think you want to do this? You know, do you think you want to do this? You know? And he's, he's not quite there yet. But I think when you have someone that's just natural and good with people, that's what you want out of public service, right? And I think he would be a great public servant. But I always make it a point, he wasn't even registered to vote when I met him. So we've come a long way. So, so now that he's not only a registered voter, he's a super voter. And, and he is very like the candidate. He is not one that goes one way on anything. And he frustrates me sometimes because we have very emotional conversations, I'm going to say it like that, where I'm like, there's the principle of who they are and blah, blah, blah. But he's like, look, but they're saying this and they're saying that. And just, we can't close our eyes and just, you know?
Love him. Love him absolutely.
I respect him a lot for that. And, and so, and by the way, when I did radio, I was the advertiser. And those are the best. Like Kevin Sutton Show is brought to you by David Moss Toyota, located on 7575 Leegue Road, you know?
Well, we're looking for, we're looking for anybody who wants me to do those pitches. I'm ready to do them. But we thank you so much. And you get to close this up.
Well, I'd like the commissioner to have some closing words for, especially the young people. We have associated to our graduates, alumni, and current students at UCF. And they really want to know more about politics. Maybe some closing words.
Well, for, for all of you out there who are young and coming up in this world that we live in now, I want you to know that I feel good that we have a great, bright future. And you're part of it. As you're listening to this and thinking we're very disconnected from what this world is, you're really not. We're just a few layers away. And get involved, get engaged. You can make a difference. And when I go to high school graduations and I meet young people, it actually gives me a little reinsurance that we're going to be okay.
Yes.
We are going to be okay. And just remember, you know, Taylor Swift and Pitbull and Bad Bunny like politics. So it's not a bad thing.
That's true.
And so if you just follow along, I am a Swifty, okay? Because I have kids. But be you, but find who you are and make that change because it's possible. If you look at the three of us, we come from very different backgrounds. We look different. We're gender different. We came from different parts of this country and this world. Yet we do believe in better government and the future of this country. And I think we all agree, we love this country. And we love the opportunities that are available. And there are no endless doors unless you create them yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.